Everybody for being here this afternoon. I am calling this meeting to order at four o'clock. If you could all please join me for the Pledge of Legions. We are here to continue discussion on policy J F C K, Student Use of Cellphones and Electronic Devices and Policy J F C K dash R, procedure.
Okay, good afternoon, everybody. Up on the screen, we do have an agenda to help guide us this afternoon for this discussion. First off, I just wanted to provide a update on an overview of the process and the timeline. Probably back this past summer, in the month of July, information got out about a school system in Maine that was banning cellphones at the middle school and the high school. That was getting attention. That was something that was coming about through the state of Maine, but also nationally in terms of some of those bans. The school committee expressed at least wanting to know a little bit more about that. And so, we had a workshop back in July, July 11th, where we went and we reviewed our current policy, but we also used that as an opportunity to look at RSU one, that's the Bath School District, to see what they had done in terms of all of their work around this issue. They had really put a committee together that had studied it for a year long in terms of what they were going to do with their cellphone policy. We shared those resources as part of our workshop. There was interest at that time for us to be able to move along and continue studying the issue. I think there was interest for us to be able to understand that a policy change of this such would need a process and would also need to be able to be studied for all of our stakeholders to be able to have some feedback. July is not a great time to get a lot of stakeholder input as we look at that. It was brought to the policy committee. The policy committee did bring that to the school committee in August, our meeting in August. We put it on the agenda where we had a first reading of a policy change. The thought was that would get this process kickstarted so that we would then be able to start to get, study the, study it more in depth, as well as also get feedback from various stakeholders. And so, with the first reading of the approval that in August, we then, as people got back to school, we did send surveys out to stakeholders. There was a survey that went to students in the middle school and high school. There was also a survey that went to families, and there was also a survey that went to staff. And so, our plan was to be able to use this workshop in October to be able to come back and review the results of, of those survey results, as well as getting other feedback as well on the policy and continued information of whether or not we want to move forward with that and continue to look at any potential policy changes. I think if it's okay, I'll turn it over to Steve, and Steve can talk about our existing policy, walk us through that quickly, and then also talk about that updated proposed policy that had its first reading back in August, and that will set us right up into leading into the survey results.
Okay, good afternoon. Our student use of cellphone and electronic devices was revised in January of 2019, and we had gone through a similar process at that time with the school committee. I'm just going to read part of our existing policy that I think will be helpful for folks. It starts out, "The Sanford School Committee recognizes that the use of-"
Steve, can I just stop you for one second? Is it, okay, perfect, there it is, thank you.
"The Sanford School Committee recognizes that the use of personal communications devices by staff and students is a convenience that many families depend on to keep in touch with each other. Cellular phones and other electronic devices can play an important role in both student safety and learning. The school committee also believes that students learn best in schools free of unnecessary disruptions and that the school climate must remain conducive to learning. Devices may not be used in any manner that disrupts in the educational process." The policy goes on to give some examples of what electronic devices are. It also talks about the school department not being responsible for lost or stolen devices, and then set forth the expectation that we would develop some administrative procedures that go along with this policy. If you want to switch, Beth, to the actual procedures, existing procedures. So, the existing procedures that are in place, I'm not going to read this word for word, I'm going to try to summarize for folks. But the first one, it says that "Students are prohibited from using privately owned electronical devices at school or during school activities except when the teacher or building principal authorizes use for specific educational health or safety purposes." So, as we look at our school system, if we look at pre-K4, our existing procedures are often away, we don't want to see them, we don't want to hear them. When we think of the element, middle school, which is now five through eight, the expectation is that student's cellphones are off. Once the morning begins, they're off, and they're not to have them again until the day ends. In between classes, during classes, they're not allowed to have them. In grades nine through 12, our existing procedures are, students are not to have them during class time, but they're allowed to have them during passing time, during lunch, and so If you look at number four, we do allow students to have, use their cellphones along the, on the bus, as long as they are using them appropriately. And we do have consequences for students that are using the, their cellphones inappropriately. If you look at number seven, these policies that, procedures that are outlined are confiscation, a conference with a student and the parent, exclusion from the cellphone for a period of time, and sanctions rating from detention to in-school suspensions. I don't, we have not brought somebody to the, in front of the school board for expulsion for a cellphone issue. And then possible referral to law enforcement if there's inappropriate things that are breaking the law that are happening with cellphones. Moving forward to the new procedure, what, so what's different in the new policy? I got to be careful not to use the word procedure because we have not developed new procedures, we're still at the policy level. The new policy prohibits the use of cellphone during school hours. So, the switch in policy is that it is now prohibiting the use of cellphones during school hours. It doesn't give us flexibility to be able to allow cellphones to be used for educational purposes. It also bans the use of cellphones during passing times and so forth. Are there any questions on old policy procedures and what we are now proposing with new policy?
Jen?
I don't have a question, just a comment based on something that you had shared. You said that you have not brought a student before the committee for expulsion pertaining to the usage of cellphone, but I think it is important to note that we have had students brought before the committee with evidence from cellphone usage-
Usage, yeah.
-that was happening during the school day in the school building.
Yeah, thank you for the clarification.
Multiple times, yeah.
Any questions on what's currently taking place?
Well, I would just add to that, that this policy, I mean, our current procedure actually states that in order for students to use a cellphone camera, they must obtain permission. And in these cases, permission has not always been granted.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Now, back as the school year started, we did send out surveys. As I mentioned, we sent surveys to stakeholders, students, middle school and high school students, parents, and then also staff. So, if we could, Beth, if we could bring up, let's start with the students. We did have between the two schools, the middle school and the high school, over 1,500 responses, which obviously, I think, is a pretty high response rate, one that we usually don't get when we come back into surveys looking at that. I don't know if you can make that a little bit larger, if possibly can. Okay, so I might have to go through and read this a little bit more in-depth, but as those fifteen and 104 responses, 53% of them came from the middle school, grades five through eight, and just under 47% came from the high school, grades nine through 12. We asked how much time students spend using the cellphone during school hours. Over 75% of the students said less than 30 minutes, and then 15, just over 15% said 30 minutes or less. So, you're looking at 30 minutes, I mean, 30 minutes to an hour. So, it's less than 30 minutes or 30 minutes to an hour for the majority of the students. When asked what the main reason for use of the cellphone during school, 43% responded that it was for texting friends and/or family. We also had just under 15% say it was for playing games. 9% said using it for school-related assignments. There are other choices included checking social media, streaming shows, movies, music, taking photos or videos. There are a number of things there. 12% said all of the above for what the cellphone was used for. The question was also asked, "In students' opinion, how does cellphone use in school affect the learning environment?" 11% felt that it enhances learning. Just under 20% felt that it distracts from learning. 30, over 30% said it had no significant impact, and then there were over 38% sometimes enhances, sometimes distracts. The question was asked, "How often do you get distracted by your cellphone during class?" Students responded, 88.5% said rarely or never. And 9.6% said one to two times per class. I am receiving, I am-
Can I just, I'm going to just make a-
Turning the results here. I'm just reading the results.
Amy, did you?
Thank you.
Yeah, I, so, I mean, right? I think, I mean, we can, we can continue. I just want to make a note that like, for me, it really would have been more helpful that we had the student surveys for the middle school separated by the high school, just to kind of help, because it's just one big hodgepodge. So, anyone who's watching, the millions that are watching right now, know that this is fifth graders through 12th graders data altogether. So, I just want to state that.
It was also asked if students believe that cellphones should be allowed during the school day. Over half the respondents said yes, with restrictions. Just under 9% know that they're distracting to learning, and just under 40% said yes, they should be allowed, they're useful tools, tools for learning. We then asked the question, "How do you think the use of cellphones during school hours impacts social interactions among students?" Over 43% felt that it helps with communication and socialization. Just under 20% said that it hinders face-to-face interactions, and over 37% said there was no significant impact. We also asked the question, "Do you think there should be stricter rules or guidelines regarding cellphone use in schools?" There was just under 69% said no, that the current rules are sufficient, and then there was over 25% said yes, but with flexibility for educational purposes with that. And so, just under 6% said yes, stricter rules are necessary. And then, "To what extent do you believe cellphone usage during the school day affects your mental health?" 18.6% said it positively affects their mental health. 42.4% said there was no significant impact on their mental health. A small number said that it does negatively impact their mental health, and then there was 33.6 said I do not use cellphone during school hours for that question. We also asked, "To what extent do you believe cellphone usage during the school day affects your academic performance?" Just under 19% felt that it improved their academic performance. Over 44% said there was no significant impact on their academic performance. 32% said that they don't use a cellphone during school hours, and just under 5% said that it decreases their academic performance. And then, the last question that was asked on the student survey, "To what extent do you believe cellphone usage during the school day affects your social relationships with peers?" The biggest response was over 34% saying there was no significant impact on the quality of their social relationships. Just under 31% felt that it improves their relationships with peers. Just over 30% said they do not use a cellphone during school hours, and then there was a real small percentage that did say it decreases the quality of their social relationships. So, those were the survey results from over the 1,500 responses that we received. If we can then move on to parents, the link that we received from parents. Oh, good. Okay. Very similar survey, asked if cellphones should be allowed in school during the day. And at other parents, we had 970 responses, which once again was another healthy and high number of responses. As Amy pointed out, we did not divide those out between whether or not it was a middle school or high school student for that. They were combined altogether. When asked if you believe cellphones should be allowed in school during the school day, under 22% said yes. 15 and a half percent said no, and just under 63% agreed that they should, but with restriction. When asked, "How do you think the use of cellphones during school hours impacts social interactions among school?", just under 50% believed that it hinders face-to-face interaction. Just under 20% said it helps with communication and socialization. Just under 20% said that there was no significant impact, and over 11% were not sure. When asked if we think there should be stricter rules or guidelines regarding cellphone use in school, the largest respondents was just under 39% that said no, the current rules are sufficient. There were just under 30% who felt yes, stricter rules are necessary, and there were another 29, just under 29% that said yes, but with flexibility for educational purposes. "To what extent do you believe cellphone usage during the school day affects your child's mental health?", the largest response was just under 43%, no significant impact on mental health. 25.7% felt that negatively impacts their mental health. 16.6% felt that it positively affects their mental health, and just over 15% said the child does not use a cellphone during school hours. We did have an opportunity there for parents to provide additional comments with there, and there were 152 of those. I'm not going to go through and read all of those. I know that the school committee did receive these results in advance. With that, I don't know if there's any takeaways that you have from your looking over those or any themes that you felt like stood out from your perspective.
I mean, I think a theme is that pertaining to cellphone use in the school, it's a whole family issue. So, my takeaway pertaining to parent comments are, there seemed to be a repetitive theme of parents wanting the opportunity to be in touch with their child, and I'm not here to make parental decisions for other people's families. What I am here to do is to create policy for the district that protects the learning environment for all students, and additionally allows us to produce students upon graduation who are ready for secondary ed, who are ready for job training, and/or are ready to enter the workforce. So, although I appreciate the time that parents took to express their comments and concerns, I believe that there are ways in which we can address what those concerns might be, even if it looks a little different from the way in which they currently communicate with their child. Because we know that behaviors are formed and then evolve into what could be considered habits, and so, I appreciate the responses, but I have to respectfully remind people what we are charged with as a school committee.
I think the, thank you, Jen. I think there was a theme there that, at least from the people who responded to comments, that had concerns about them not being able to get in touch with their students during the school day from that. I think that was probably one of the themes that went through there that I know I picked up on. Okay, and then the third survey was staff, and also, in this situation, we did not delineate of, we did not delineate from whether or not this was middle school or high school staff. And also, we gave the survey out at the beginning of the school year, and I know also there was people in the midst of some potential changes to the cellphone policy. I know in particular, as I mentioned, talked to Principal Tracy Gibson, there, she had heard from staff that, "Am I giving the survey results to what I've had in the past with that, or is it going to be able to be into what is going on currently in place for this year?" And I think Tracy can speak to that later. But I did want to point that out, that in terms of the survey response, there was just under 180, there were 179 of them, that that was, they were not divided out by middle school or high school, and some people had commented, "It was, am I talking about past experience or what was currently in place where there hadn't been a lot of time yet when the survey was given?" The first question, "Based on observations, as a staff member, how do you think students use their cellphone during school hours?" The largest response was just under 32% saying that it's less than 30 minutes. Over 27% said 30 minutes to an hour. 21% said one to two hours, and just under 20% said more than two hours. So, you have pretty well equally divided there. "Based on your observations, what do you think your students primarily use their cellphones for during class?" Just under 60% said all of the above, which was checking social media, which was just under 15%. There was a small number of taking photos and videos. There was a small number of playing games, streaming video. There were over 16% that they weren't sure what they were used for, for cellphones during, during class. "In your opinion, how does cellphone use in school affect the learning environment?" Just under 72% felt that it distracts from learning, and just over 19% that it sometimes enhances and sometimes distracts. And the, I think just 8% was no significant impact for that. "How often, as a staff member, do you observe students getting distracted by their cellphones during class?" The largest number was 37.6% that said rarely or never. There were 30, over 30% that said one or two times per class. Just under, over 20% was three to four times per class, and then in 11% said five or more times per class. When asked if they believe cellphones should be allowed in school during the school day, 50% of the respondents said no, they're distracting to learning. 42.1% said yes, but with restrictions, and then 7.3% said yes, that they can be useful tools for learning. Then, "Based on your observations, how do you think the use of cellphones during school hours impacts social interactions among students?" Just under 74% says it hinders face-to-face interactions. Over 17% said no significant impact, and then 8% saying that it helps with communication and socialization. When asked if they thought there should be stricter rules or guidelines regarding cellphone use in school, over 43% said yes, stricter rules are necessary. 28.5% no, said the current rules are sufficient, and 27.4% said yes, there should be stricter guidelines, but with flexibility for educational purposes. And then, "Based on observations, to what extent do they believe cellphone usage during the school day affects their students' mental health?" 61.2% feels that it negatively impacts their mental health. Over 28% were not sure, and then you had the remaining 11%. Majority of that was no significant impact on their mental health, but there were some in there who did believe that it positively affects their mental health. And then beyond that, there were 27 responses there, also additional comments to go beyond the survey for that. So, that's an overview of the survey results from students and parents and staff. Those results, we have shared with the school committee previously to be able to look at. School committee, are there any additional feedback or thoughts from the survey or any questions?
I actually did have some thoughts regarding this particular survey. One of them is just thoughts that I jotted down as I was reading it, which is number one, and, which is based on observations, "How often do you think students use their cellphones during school hours?" And it was, the highest number was 30 minutes or less, and yet, if you go to number three, "In your opinion, how does cellphone use in school affect the learning environment?", 71.9% say it distracts. So, how can you have students use the cellphones in school 30 minutes or less, and yet, there's that much distraction throughout the day? And I understand that this is, you know, fifth grade all the way to 12th grade, but I'm just wondering where, how do I, I don't know, those two numbers just don't seem to really add up to me. And then, number one and number four, how can those be explained? Because you still have, you still have a discrepancy in the numbers there, like rarely or never are students getting distracted, and yet, there is a huge number of students that apparently, or a huge number of times that there is distraction in the classroom. You know, you've got 50% of the staff saying that they should not be allowed in school overall, and yet, over and over again, there's a sense that, no, they're not distracting, or yes, they are distracting. I mean, I'm just wondering, I don't know, I just see a lot of discrepancies there. And then, number eight, I mean, and maybe this is just because I've read, you know, very, very slowly so I could intake everything, the anxious nation, but number eight, "Based on your observation, to what extent do you believe cellphone usage during the school day affects your students' mental health?", I'm actually surprised that 28.1% of staff said they're not sure. I mean, I think everybody has an idea as to how maybe cellphones are not necessarily the healthiest at all times, so I just find that to be a pretty large number, and those are my thoughts.
Yeah, I think when you look at some of the percentages and the times, I think it's not, I don't know if you've got to get an equal correlation between those. I think at the end, you're talking about distracting, that that's something that's coming back that is, is the ongoing piece of how that may be something that is impeding people's ability to be able to focus and be able to be learned on the lesson. So, I think that's where you may be getting some of the people talking about it, and then there's others that, you know, it could be distracting, but at what level on whether or not in the- And then there's others that, you know, it could be distracting, but at, at what level on whether or not and how impactful. I'm not sure that some of our staff were comfortable in being able to, to report out on that.
I mean, just going along with what you were saying, Paul, like I, you know, this, you know, number six, do you believe cellphones should be allowed in school during the school day? Just the fact that our own staff for two schools is, is, is split on it tells us how, it validates this larger discussion about it, in my opinion. I feel like the, the staff survey is, for me, is the most valuable. Because, you know, it does, I mean, I don't want to say conflicts, but like, do you think there should be a number eight? Do you think there should be stricter rules or guidelines regarding cellphones in school? And essentially, it's seventy-one percent, because some, you know, forty-three are saying, yes, stricter rules are necessary. And then twenty-seven point four are saying yes, with flexibility for educational purposes. But, so it, you know, I feel like the, the larger amount of the staff at both schools, again. Hard to know, like, you know, did the majority of the high schoolers take it, did the majority of the middle schools take it? I don't, I mean, we have no way of knowing. But I think when I read this, my interpretation is, we do need to talk about it more, and I'm glad we are today.
And I think it's a good point, Amy, that you mentioned that there's pros and cons to each one. And in terms of, when you're looking at that, that makes this a challenging issue. It's not going to have something that is something that's very easily in terms of a decision to quantify. Because there is value in terms of barring that. And I think that is also contributing to the challenge that we have and probably challenge for people to take the survey as well with their feedback.
I would just add that I agree with Amy, from the survey perspective, the staff survey is. Probably the most valuable feedback that I can get as we navigate this conversation. And I think on some level, everyone can agree that cellphone issues negatively impact. The learning environment of our schools in some capacity. So it becomes the chicken and the egg, right? So is it a problem for our classroom teachers or is it a problem that our admin is going to have to deal with? And I do not mean that in a disrespectful manner, because I can firmly say that nobody on this panel. Wants to make more work for our classroom teachers and nobody wants to make more work for our admin. But it truly is the chicken and the egg. Someone gets left holding the bag, whether it be the classroom teachers, because things just remain status quo. Or whether something changes and then it becomes our admin team, teams, holding the bag. And so, you know, I want to have a conversation about how do we best support both stakeholders? So that positive change can be implemented in a way that is beneficial for our entire school community. From our youngest students to our oldest students, from our most green teacher to our most veteran teacher, like the whole spectrum. You know, and I can admit that I, I don't have those answers today, you know? But I love that we were able to get direct classroom teacher feedback, because we don't hear from our classroom teachers a lot. We really trust our admin to be their voice at the school committee level. And so, you know, I'm anxious to open that conversation about. Nobody holding the back.
Okay, so, thank you, that might be a nice lead-in now for us on the agenda. We do have our administrators here from middle school and high school. I think it's probably helpful to hear from them in terms of that. I know there have been changes, or at least. A focus on the policy. As Steve mentioned earlier, the policy that's currently in place, which is right now. Not the banning of cellphones allowed in school, but with. Administrative oversight in terms of that. So Tracy, if you don't mind coming up, we can at least hear from you in terms of. Cellphone policy at the high school and what is, what the high school is currently doing.
Well, I, sorry, just before you get going, it's just kind of like a trigger word for me, the word banning. Because I'm like, eliminating school cellphones from our learning environment is really the objective, if we deem it necessary. Because banning just feels like it's like combative, you know, like pitting people against people. It's really, do we need to eliminate cellphones from the learning environment?
Good afternoon. Currently, we do have three students here that probably could have some student feedback on what they're seeing going on in the class. When I first started, it was, I met with a lot of staff and they identified that cellphones were an issue in the classroom. Administration at the time was talking about drama, as people refer to it. Where something that may start outside of school is brought into school, students will ask to leave class. You know, if there's a vibration in their pocket, to wander the halls, go out into the classrooms. It's, it's tough for everybody, adults as well, when you have your phones on you and it can be a distraction. So I was made aware that that was something that we needed to be focusing on. Later, met with the school committee and learnt about the first reading of this elimination of school devices. So at that time, we reviewed our current policy and, you know, collectively as a staff, recognized that it wasn't being followed. People thought that it was a new policy that the new principal had put into effect and like, no. It's, it's there already. But it is a battle, you know, and whether or not, you know, as you said, chicken or the egg, or who is going to have to, you know, put up with it. But what we are getting feedback from the staff. The survey is difficult for, as we review those results to know, is this, you know, a middle school response? And as, you know, Steve reported that at the middle school, they're not allowed at all. What we have been enforcing at the high school level is that they are supposed to be put away. As in the current policy, it says in a standard place within the classroom, students will get them before class. In between passing and at lunch. So that has been happening, is it a hundred percent? No, we just left a department chair meeting and just kind of went around, you know, we're third week into October, what, what's going on? And staff is reporting that they're seeing a little less of students putting the phones in the holders. They might say they don't have them, but they're not seeing them out in class. So then that is, okay, are they asking to go to the bathroom? You know, are they leaving class, are they avoiding class because they might have them on them, on them and they're, they're not being honest with you? So, you know, that is one of those issues that we want to make sure that we're continuing to, to watch that. But they are reporting. Admin, classroom teachers, there is less cellphone drama with that. Like there's not as much tearing, fighting, people needing to go to counseling because something happened. Less students leaving the class, less students being distracted. Even some of my, the veteran staff that said, I never thought cellphones were an issue. And now they're like, wow, even, you know, your students in your top classes are a lot more focused than they were. But I would be interested to hear from, you know, our students, what they are seeing as well. You know, we've had some, some staff members that haven't been following it. And so that's a conversation that administration has had with them and reinforcing what the expectations are. But overall, like I said, the department chairs today had, had positive things about the climate and culture change that they've seen since September. With enforcing and following our current policy, but.
Want to hear from the students?
Put you on the spot.
Yeah. I think that since the beginning of the school year, I'm a senior, so I've been in the high school now, this is my fourth year. And I think that, I mean, I don't have, I have like three classes, but I think it, that there is a lot less cellphone use in class. Specifically, I think my block one is English and I notice a lot more like. Everybody puts it in the phone hotel and we're more engaged like with each other and things like that. I also think that an important thing to consider that I haven't heard anybody bring up yet is that cellphones are an addiction. Like whether you're in fifth grade or whether you're an adult, they're an addiction. And I think that you kind of have to deal with it in a way that you would deal with someone. I mean, it's not the same caliber, but like if somebody was smoking cigarettes, you wouldn't just take them away cold turkey. I think it's a little bit more complex than that, which adds even more to the complexity of the cellphone argument. But I think that part of what is so difficult is that it's really hard for kids to just give them up. Not, I mean, they are teenagers, but it is also, there's a part of their brain that's looking for the satisfaction that they feel when they. Open their cellphone and they see a message or they see a notification or something like that. And they kind of need to be like weaned off of that and yeah, I just wanted to add that to the conversation.
So what I've seen based off my, um, looking at everything, I've noticed a decrease in every class I've been to. Sure, there's still, you know, some who don't and still use it. But overall, I've noticed a general decrease. May people following the new school hotel rules, whatnot. And be more engaged, focused, in better grades on their homework and stuff, whatnot. And just overall, a decrease instead of a increase or staying the same.
Thanks Zach.
I would like to point out to address something I've heard a few of you mention. On the survey, you said that like thirty or something percent of teachers said they only saw students using their phones like one or two times a class. But seventy percent saw it as a distraction. That doesn't really take into account how much of a distraction or problem cellphones might be. So sure, it might be that like they only see someone using it one or two times a class, but they could say, hey, that's a distraction. That doesn't necessarily mean that seventy percent of teachers think that. It's a really big problem. They might see it as a negative, but that doesn't mean that. They see it as a really like, do you know what I'm saying? I don't really know how to articulate it, but. I would like to point out that there are three stakeholders involved, it's not just the teachers and administration, but also the students. I do think that cellphones are an addiction and they might be distracting to learning. But they are also useful for communication and contacting parents. Like I'm a three sport athlete, so every day after practice, I need to contact my parents somehow, text them, say, hey, could you come pick me up? And without access to my phone, that might be difficult. So while I do think that cellphones are. Maybe not the best, the best thing to have in class, they might still be good to have after school, before school and passing time. Because it's kind of hard to see how they might be impacting learning during passing time or lunch or before and after school. But to move on, I would say that with the new cellphone policies, I have seen a lot less kids using their phones in school. I do think it's made a good impact. And I do think that a ban might be a little too far.
I just want to say, I have to smile a tiny bit when each of our students' reps said the new policy. Because this is not a new policy, this has been your policy since your entire high school career. So it's not new, it's just being enforced now.
I do think that in reviewing those surveys, like I said, it's hard to see if these are high school parents that are responding or if they're middle school parents. But the trend that I did notice, and I have also, I think I can speak for administration as well, the constant that we have heard. Is going back to the November fifteenth and parents are adamant. That they will be able to get a hold of their children in case of an emergency. So that is, that's the big thing of they want to make sure that they have access. If we have to evacuate or even during a lockdown, that communication piece.
Yeah, well, I just wanted to share, you know, I, I always hesitate to say things like, the feedback that I've, that I've heard, you know? Because I want to preface that with, you know, each of us collectively, the feedback that we hear is very miniscule. In the context of the entire student body. So it would be wrong of me to say, oh, well, this, you know, we should do this because, you know, I heard from ten people, you know, in my personal circle of influence. With that being said, I just wanted to applaud your efforts. Because the feedback that I have received, conducive to just the people that I cross paths with. Having had a child who went through Sanford High School. And, you know, we had our own cellphone battles, I'm like, why are you talking to me during school? You know, I've heard really great things about the phone hotel. My concern would be the ability for staff to keep it up. And what kind of supports need to be in place? For what you are currently doing that seems to be working and evolving and potentially could even get better, right? Because we would want to be getting better, we wouldn't want to be sliding back, you know? And so I think we need to think about that, because people get comfortable really quick. And so being in a position where, you know, do we make a change, do we not make a change? Like, you know, that's a scary place to be, because as I said, no one's looking to make things harder, you know? Our school days are already full of hard, so nobody wants to make anything harder. And so I would just be curious to know, how do you see the ability to be able to continue on the path in which you're currently trending?
Well, I would say we have made a huge change already. And I think, like you said, like people think it's a new policy. But staff has bought into it and the feedback that we're getting is very positive from them. So it is their, you know, to their benefit for their classroom culture to continue with that. And if it's not happening, they know we have an amazing administrative staff that will support them. And deal with the students that are not following that expectation.
And do you feel like it would be advantageous, you're dealing with our oldest learners of the district. Introducing them to potentially some adult themes like policy, right? Do you feel like kids are ready to hear that? Meaning, you know, you don't, you could, you don't want to like leverage it as a threat, you know what I mean? But making students aware that, you know, our school is governed by policy. So hey, we're applauding everything that you're doing right now and everybody kind of falling in line with the existing policy. However, if we are unable to successfully abide by the existing policy. You know, school committee does have authority to revisit policy. Do you feel like that's a conversation?
Those, those conversations have been happening and when we had the first class meetings, we talked about that. You know, so I started out with, have you all heard about the bans that are going on in other schools? And what we're going to do as a collective effort to show that we can, we can follow the, the current policy. And even when staff has had some pushback from students. I said, you know, you can make them aware of the, the first reading of the policy and how that works. And so I know some staff have also been following up that conversation in their classrooms. I don't know to what extent, but I do think that's important. And I also think the older learners are probably giving the, the most pushback because it's their fourth or third year. And they have less freedom in the classroom. So the hope is, is that they will be able to, you know, recognize, you know, like you said, like not cold turkey. But eventually be able to recognize that they are more engaged, as you said, like seeing more engagement in the classrooms themselves. So they'll see the benefit on top of just the staff.
I just have a quick question, I'm just curious. Do you have all teachers use hotels or do some teachers just say, put them on your desk or put them on my desk or how's everybody?
The policy reads a standard place, so there are some classrooms, like I know a lot of the math teachers are using their calculator holders. And students are putting them in there. But no, I do not know of any staff that are allowing them to keep them on their desk.
Just something you were saying, you know, we're trying, at the high school level, we're trying to prepare them for the real world, right? Um I, just something you were saying, I, you know, we're trying at the high school level, we're trying to prepare them for the real world, right? And so it would, it would make me happy to know that this, we, like what, the, the trend that we're going on right now is going to continue because it does prepare them for the workforce. You know, even the kids who are working right now, if there, it doesn't matter where they're working, there's a time for your phone and there's time, there's a time to be at work. And so, you know, most employers want you only on your phone during your break time, not these, these quick sneak peeks because they're all, that's how mistakes happen. And so I think, um, you know, we're just, I think we all know in the room that we're preparing them and just the fact that they know that they cannot be constantly on their phone. It's just we're not preparing them for the real world, but I think we all know that.
So for me, I wanted to reflect on the procedure seven, section seven. Um A says you're going to confiscate a phone. B says you're going to have a meeting with a parent. And C says exclusion of, from the, of device bringing that to school. How, you know, are you actually, are we actually confiscating phones? Is that actually happening? Um I, with this, with the new, with the new, I'm saying it. With the implementation of our current policy, um they're being turned in, right? So I, I'm assuming we're not having to confiscate as, as much as last year. Um and then how many times are you confisc, you know, is there a system in place, I guess? If you confisc, if we confiscated three times, two, you know, is there a system in place on when parents are coming in? Um and then, you know, have we had to, do you have any students that are not allowed to bring their phone? And how's that kind of going?
Uh we, so we, they're conferencing every day. Um even uh the school counselors were saying like they're counseling every day, getting requests for five oh fours to accommodate cellphones, like trying to find ways that they can get, still get the phones. But when they go to the administrative um team, if they have not followed the policy, then they'll leave their cellphone with them um in the office. And we have conferenced with many parents.
Is there any thought to instead of, and just this is off for everybody, I guess, instead of having them leave it home, you know, that's not happening? Maybe just they have to turn it in when they get to school and pick it up at the end of the day, kind of a situation? Because I don't know any student that would actually leave it home, sitting on the, and that also goes to the addiction piece, right? Like they, they just can't leave it home. They need it on them, so. The other thing was, oh, I just want to mention again, students obtaining permission to take photos and videos and just maybe a procedure or a, something that you guys are doing for that as well.
So I don't know if this is putting you on the spot or if I'm killing a dead horse, but in, so your opinion, if I were to ask you right now, would you say, right now, we're in a good spot? We're finally using the policy that has been set in place for a while, but it's now being acknowledged and um being supported. Would you say that this is a good spot for you and you feel like we should keep going at this pace and stay where we are? For the high school.
This is my first year here, so I can't, I can't compare what it was like before. Um but my opinion is still the same that I shared with you, you know, when we first discussed this, which, you know, goes along with what Amy said is I think we are preparing hopefully our students for life after high school. And that includes responsible cellphone use. And that goes into your career. We all probably sitting here have cellphones. And we need to learn how to use those appropriately. The feedback that I have gotten um from staff and even from these students right here, they're seeing a difference. They're seeing um less students wandering the halls. Is it perfect? No. Are there, are there battles that teachers have to fight with students every day? Yes. Um so I'm not going to say it's perfect by any means, but it is, it's getting better. And the, that's the response that we're getting is less wandering, um less issues with cellphone, more focus in the classroom, more productivity, more engagement. So it's positive feedback. Um and I think that it would be worth doing another survey. I will say, um as Superintendent Nelson said, we did have that conversation because staff came to me and they said, I don't know if I'm supposed to be, you know, writing this based on June or right now. So even the stricter policy need, they were like, do we say like, yes, we needed a stricter policy because we're actually being stricter with our policy right now and it's working? Or do we need a stricter policy than what we're doing? So it's hard to go by those survey results, but it seems like we're in a good place. Is it perfect? No. Um but we will continue, like you said, as things start to slide, we'll have to come back to it and making sure that, you know, people don't become complacent. But I don't, staff is reporting that they like the culture in their classrooms better.
I would just wrap up with um this policy was twenty nineteen, correct? And so I just want to give a big shout out to Matt Peterman for getting our kids back to school post COVID. You know, because I just hope that you're not feeling beat up over the cellphone policy. You know, because we had bigger fish to fry when we were coming back from COVID. And I don't want you to feel this as a reflection of um, you know, the service that you gave us as a principal. I'm a big Matt fan. And um I feel like that's like an elephant in the room because you're here, you know, and you were the prior principal, you know? And we're not recognizing because we have a little short term memory that we went through a pandemic and kids came back and they were wild and we had a lot to do. You know, so it, it's not that you weren't doing it, it's just that now felt an appropriate time to address it post pandemic. Gotcha.
I was gonna say on that, just remember, when they come back from Christmas break, it might be interesting.
Well, I think it also speaks to, it, 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 it speaks to, um, you know, sometimes when you look at policy, do you want to go to something of eliminating or is it more about, wait a minute here, let's really get some uh consistency? And coming back to be able to get the buy-in to be able to come back and do that. That's regardless if we're talking about cellphones or anything, you know, for that matter, to come in to be able to do that. Those are challenges that uh I don't think you're just talking about Sanford High School. You're also talking about, um, I think all uh high schools are coming back into looking at the challenges that that provides and being able to um be clear and communicate and be consistent in terms of that because as you saw in the surveys, there's value uh that there is there. But I think there's concerns about protecting that learning environment, uh eliminating distractions and also some of the other negatives that things can lead to when you're talking about, um, in this particular case, cellphones. All right, uh. Next, what is the wishes of the school committee next? Thank you, Tracy. Uh would we like to bring up uh the uh middle school admin? I think in that case, if you're okay, Pam, you can also bring up Mike and Joe. You got three seats right up here. Uh because I imagine that that might have to be um, um, some of the, yeah, might have to be a little bit of a a group effort in terms of looking at what's going on there. But Pam, do you want to kind of kick things off in terms of, from the perspective of administration at Sanford Middle?
I mean, currently, we're having the kids put their phones in their backpacks um when the school day starts. I feel like consistency amongst staff and the fidelity of not just the classroom teachers, front office, um ed techs, just making sure, hey, you see the phone out? We have our consequences reference in our handbook that Joe will go over in a second. But this year, talking with our department chairs and our stronger connection committee, we're really seeing the kids do a really good job with not having those phones out. Is it perfect? No. We got to cut back on some of them hiding them in their pockets. That's a little bit of a problem. But overall, I think this is the best year that I've seen um with staff following.
I mean, nothing is going to be perfect, whatever policy we enforce or we, we put forward with new. Um we have existing policies that kids violate. They still bring stuff to school that they shouldn't. Um so kids are still going to bring their phones to school, even if we do a ban or call it an elimination or whatever it is. Um that's inevitable. I have, it is better this year, I will say, I have about uh two phones today on my desk to check in and give back at the end of the day to some students. Usually it's about five to six average, so that's better. Um in the backpack, out of sight is the, is the key phrasing, I think, for the middle school with what's working right now. Making sure that they are not in the side of the backpack, not in the pocket. Um and that's been helpful with kids not bringing them into the bathroom, um eliminate during passing time, things like that. But we still have them out. We allow them in the morning. It's a privilege. Up until seven forty, the announcements come on, phones go in the backpack. Most kids are good. Um and then at the end of the day at two oh five, okay, phones can come back out. But kids are getting better. Um parents are getting a little bit better about not texting during the day and vice versa. I get it as, as a parent and wanting to do that with my own, uh, my own kids as well. Um the AirPods have been a battle that we've, we've picked because it will have the, the AirPod in. We don't see the phone, but it's probably linked up to, to the Bluetooth, so we're listening to other stuff, so. Um is it perfect? No, but it's, I think it's, it's in, it's being enforced more consistently with staff. Um I don't know that, that we would want to change a whole lot um with that. But again, it's enforcing and getting all the teachers on the same page with that.
And Jen, you had mentioned um kind of who's it on? With our first two offenses, the classroom teachers support that behavior. And then when it comes a third time, that's when the administration's called in. Um we have had some parents that are supportive with, okay, my kid's at this offense, I'm going to keep the phone home. But you're right, it's an addiction for some of these kids and they're going to go in their parents' drawers. Not all kids, some of them, they're going to get them and bring them to school, so nothing's perfect. Um we definitely got to be on those, um, you know, little loopholes that we all know kiddos are going to find. But I really hope um we're supporting the high school with keeping them in the bag. So when they start to get the kids, um, our little fifth, sixth, seventh and eighth graders, by the time they become ninth graders, that they've got some consistency in practicing. Definitely have to keep a lens on it. Once you get the traction going, you can't just be like, oh, let's kind of forget about it. I think constant reminders are very, very important. Constant language, not just in the classroom, in the hallways, in the cafeteria, in the library. I think that once kids know they're not messing around, teachers and, and staff are honest about this, that starts to instill with them. Um you guys did a really good job advocating and speaking as well, so I'm proud of you guys for that. Yeah, I mean, our stronger connections committee, they said today when I met with them, they're like, yeah, Pam, we're really seeing a decrease um on phones being used and it's really nice to go in the classrooms and see kids actually engaged in the learning instead of like under here, so.
No, I think we just continue to reinforce it. And if it gets to the uh office level with Joe or I, we do have some kids that have to turn them in for a couple of weeks. Um and they dislike uh having to come in and check them in, so then they keep them away. They've done a good job of that. Um are there repeat offenders? Unfortunately, yes, sometimes. Um but overall, I think there's a uh, a good learned lesson that happens there. The student still has the phone for the walk to school, walk home. That's usually a concern um with parents of, you know, but they don't have access to it during the school day. So that, that's been a good thing.
And certainly if a practice or something's canceled, then they ask, hey, can I take my phone out and text, uh text my parents? We have that flexibility there as well. We've actually had, very rare, but we have had some kids that have come in and just said, can you just hold on to my phone for me? It just gets me in too much trouble. So self advocacy there, which is really nice.
We've had some good conversations with parents. It's okay to take your kid's phone. Um, you know, and, and that's been a shift with, I think, some, some parents. And I can tell you from my own personal experience, mine's a, a better, a better person when we take that away and give that break and set those parameters. And we build those into plans with, with some of the parents that we work with and it's, it's worked really nicely. And we also will help at school. Uh but like I said, we're still going to have, you know, issues come up, um we'll deal with them. But the phones in the backpack has been a, an out of sight is the, is the phrasing at the middle school that, you know, um makes the most sense, I think, for everybody.
So you mentioned that, um, is it three times in the classroom and then it comes to admin? Two times, then the third, third offense is bringing it to admin? Um at, at that point, are you getting parents involved then or is it then they have more steps with admin and then parent, like, so how does that look?
Yeah, the parents are being contacted at that point with the third offense.
It would either be by the administrator or we might ask the classroom teacher to do it. We typically will give the phone back at the end of the day. And then that way, as a parent, you know, okay, this is coming. It's not out of left field uh by the time, if it does come up to the office again. So usually at that point, most parents are, are on board with that. It's a lot more work, but it's, it, 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 it does work.
Whereas what you mean, Joe, is the first two, when it's at the classroom level, the classroom teacher's communicating that. So that when it does, if there is a third time and it reaches your level, you're having that contact, they've already been contacted uh twice before. Or at least, at least beforehand, knowing it's not coming in, that there's been an issue that they didn't know about.
Yeah, and we've asked teachers to, to do that and front load that work. Um it's, it's gone well with that. So then it's a, it's not blindsided by the parent when it comes to us, so.
And that's all tracked, like, so you documented. So when you're talking to the parent, you can say, you know, twice a week, whatever. Um for me, I think my suggestion, I personally like the policy where it says to have a hotel and have them turned in at the beginning of class. I think keeping that consistent between the schools as well is going to set up our freshmen for success. So that would just be my suggestion to follow the policy. Um that says there's a designated area for the device. It's going to stop that AirPod problem pretty easily. Um so that's just from, based off of what you're implementing. Uh obviously kudos of, and it will help track it as well. You're not going to have, you, you know, nobody's taking to the bathroom. Um I've heard that at the high school, you know, the kids are trying to take their phones, but there's no way it's in their pocket and go into them with the bathroom. So I just, I would just, that would be my only opinion on that.
Because I think the policy's being followed. The designated area at the high school is the, the hotels. At the middle school, it's away in the backpack with that. So, right, is, that's the interpretation that the?
Yeah, one thing I'd just like to say is, is that it eliminates. For us at the middle school, it's, it's easier for the kids to have them put away in their backpack and have less shuffling to the front of the classroom, chance of them breaking, falling out. Um so that's why we've really looked at the backpack as opposed to having them all up front. And unfortunately, I've even had some students turn into me what they call burner cellphones. So they're fakes. And then I end up finding them with a phone the rest, somewhere else during the day. So this has just worked for us right now. Um is it perfect? No, I don't think anything's going to be exactly perfect, in my opinion. But i- it's really helped out having them, keep them on them. And there's less chance of them ending up in someone else's hands.
We do have the shorter blocks. There are about fifty-four minutes at the middle school. So if we're focusing on like maximizing, maximizing learning time, so it's another district goal that we have. We want to make sure that we're able to do that. So my only fear with the check in every class um might be taking, you know, time away from that. It's one, one of my worries.
So, yeah, okay. So I'm going to open up a difficult conversation. Middle school and high school, it's an apple and an orange, like as far as the maturity level of students. So I respectfully disagree with the phone hotel, just given the maturity level of middle school students. Um I do not think the phone hotel is a good idea. I can see kids, you know, taking each other's phones and just it turning into a total disaster. Um with that being said, you know, I think about what middle school, they're a special, special people. What they have to deal with day in and day out, you know? And so when we're talking about the current practice of the phones being in the backpack and then the two-strike rule in the classroom, I'm just really struggling with that. Because, you know, cellphones are just one distraction in a middle school classroom, if you've ever been in a middle school classroom. You know, so if you've got twenty plus kids in there, potentially forty infractions, I know that's worst case scenario. But forty infractions and what did you just mention for the block times, Joe?
Fifty-four.
Fifty-four minutes, not taking into account other um distractions. You know, I just, for this age, the word elimination to me is conducive with the practice that you're already doing with them being in the backpack. But it sends a different message home. It is a, it is a more aggressive message of, under no circumstance, aside from an emergency, is your student to have their phone out. And um I feel like the ability for that to be escalated on the first offense is also something that sends a message to students. is also something that sends a message to student and sends a message to home that this is what we're doing to protect our learning environment. Given everything that middle school teachers are juggling in a fifty-something minute block.
So can I just ask you for clarification? Are you saying that for the middle school, we should call it and say that it's elimination? But the elimination means they stay in your backpack?
I wouldn't even clarify that. I would allow people to self navigate that. Are we doing backpack searches? No. So elimination to me is.
We don't see them.
I don't see them. And how you choose to implement that, whether you're leaving your phone home, you're leaving your phone in the front office, you're leaving your phone in the school counseling office, or you're leaving your phone in your backpack, is totally fine. I'm not going to tell you how to implement elimination. What I'm going to tell you is what the consequences are.
I, I, I agree with Jen. I, I've, you know, since we started talking about this, this summer. The high school, I felt like, you know, we got to prepare these kids when they're going in the workforce. If they were to go working for my husband, like, there's no job on this, you, you're not pulling out your phone. But at the middle, like, I feel like they need to sort of make little mistakes to realize, like, this is not going to happen. I feel like at the, you know, there's like that national, what is it? Wait, wait till eight. Wait till eight.
I was going to bring that up. I, I have it on my phone, but I forgot.
And, um, I just, you know, I struggle with sort of them, the, the middle school students having them at all. And, you know, like, to your point of, you know, whether, whether, I'm not looking to necessarily get the bags at the middle school and make another headache and, you know, all that. But like, you, if one strike, it's gone. Like, I, I feel for the teachers that have twenty-six kids in their class, which a lot of them do. If they're giving, you know, it's just another headache for them to have to deal with it. If you're like, phones are gone now, moving forward, then it's, if you're, if you're, if you're caught with one, then there's a significant consequence. Instead of like the strike one, strike two, it's sort of like makes it, I think, cleaner in the sense of the disciplinary earring, and then hopefully they will not do it again. It'll be really hard in the beginning for them. But I just, I don't, I feel like we almost have to kind of help, help them know that, like, I don't know. I feel like I'm mumbling, but.
Well, and just for your point, Mike, like, I, I do agree with, you know, kids having their phone for safety purposes to and from school. I do agree with a student being able to contact a parent after school. I don't have confidence, and it's not a knock on kids, it's science, it's brain development, it's impulse control, it's the increase of ADHD, it's, you know, and so I just think like, let's do them a favor, you know? And let's help them help themselves. I know that sounds easier said than done. I, I get it, I have a lot of kids. But with that being said, I resonate the message of, you know, how can we support you? How can we help you? What tools do you need if this is the direction, you know, that the committee and administration feel is in the best interest of our students to protect the learning environment? I love that you're trending in the right direction. But I just have significant concerns about that sustainability. It's an exhaustion that is going to set in dealing with the demographic at the high, at the middle school.
Yeah, I just want to add that I'm, I'm on board with you, Jen, and with you, Amy. And I know that we've discussed all of this before. I do think it's, it's a different apples and oranges between the high school and the middle school. And I think the middle school has it really tough.
You could even argue apples and oranges with our fifth graders to our eighth graders.
And I mean, just to tag on to what you're saying, Jen, and what you had said. It's like, you know, I have, I have a seventh and eighth grader, right? And so I understand like the need to get in touch with me after, but they can do it after school. Do you know what I mean? Like, you can communicate what you're doing, you know, or I can call the school. I have one kid that doesn't have a phone right now and I've had to call the school and say, hey, tell her she needs to do this and that. I mean, again, another headache, but it's teaching her a lesson also, that good, better communication too.
Okay, any, uh, other thoughts in the school committee in terms of, um, looking for any more feedback? Any more questions that people have? Looking at next steps that the school committee would like to see in terms of? In a workshop, we're not looking for any action. This is more of just us collecting information to be able to, uh, look at that, for that. So I'm very appreciative of, uh, our, uh, middle school and high school admin, as well as our, uh, student reps for the feedback that they have. Is there anything else in terms, as we look at cell phones and look at the policy, that the school committee is interested in, um, further questions or looking for further information?
Yes, uh, I'd like to hear from our director of school counseling, if she can split up her thoughts, please, pertaining to the high school and the middle school. Speaking specifically to what does she think would be needed? As the current policy at the high school is enforced pertaining to the addiction piece that the, um, student rep shared, and also pertaining to the middle school and what supports would need to be in place in the event that, um, things tightened up there and, and we asked for an elimination of cell phones with escalated consequences.
Good afternoon, Beth Letourneau. I, if I look at fifth through eighth, um, it was talked about earlier, there is a national movement called Wait Till Eight. And that's based on brain science around when kids are ready to have cell phones. It is a struggle as a parent of a middle schooler to not have a cellphone. I know the school counselors recently at the middle school did a survey with kids just randomly in class. And it was reported to me that about ninety percent of sixth graders reported to have cell phones. And I found that shocking as a mom of a sixth grader, of sort of like, wow, when he says everyone but him has one, he actually might be right, right? But I believe firmly in the brain science and knowing your own kids. And what works for some families doesn't work for others. I think in terms of support, I think us doing some messaging out to families to understand. I know that some staff members at the high school are working on a book club related to an amazing book called The Anxious Generation, which, if you haven't read it, is incredible. But it's a long read and it's also one with a ton of information that you have to sort of like read, put it down, go back, read, put it down. So I think a potential community collaboration related to that book. I think, um, some trainings and some parenting suggestions. I think for some parents, it's a shock. I think Mr. Mistracchio talked about that earlier, like, I can really take my kid's phone away? Yes, you can do that. But also how to prepare for the meltdown that will ensue, right? Because middle school, high school too, but especially middle school, it's all about the interaction with friends. You have one, I don't have one, what am I going to miss out on? So working with families and kids on that, and obviously through the support of the school counseling. When I look at the high school, my experience has been there has been quite a shift in staff following through. And I think the message came out loud and clear this fall. These people aren't messing around, like, they might take our phones away. Are you with me? Do you think that's the message the kids got?
It is.
Yeah, like, these people aren't playing. My phone is going to be gone. And so that is really what I feel like has happened at the high school and, and has really helped the situation is that kids know, again, but it's just like when you're disciplining at home, right? This is the plan, you're only allowed to use it on Friday and Saturday. Well, we snuck in a Thursday, now we're down to Wednesday, you have to kind of go back. So I think continuous messaging to kids and to staff about the importance and why it is a priority is helpful. And just support. I think support when calls come from families that are disappointed, frustrated, angry, calls or emails to the board, also to central office staff, right, related to sort of like, they can't take my phone away. Well, in fact, this is the policy that we have. November fifteenth had a huge impact on everybody. I was there, it was a big impact on me. Little known, I actually did not have my phone with me, um, when the emergency went and didn't feel like I could interrupt the Secret Service and say, can I go grab my phone? And so was not able to get in touch with my family till an hour or two later and just simply sent a text from someone else's phone, I'm fine, I'll call you later. And so I get that that is very real for families. So I think being able to navigate that and understand that we have to allow families to be able to be in touch with their children when an emergency like that happens, but also give the students and families the understanding of, it's not healthy to be able to be in touch with your children all of the time. It's not healthy. We want our kids to get coping skills, right? To feel anxious and not be able to send mom a text, I'm anxious, what do I do, what do I do? To be able to feel that feeling, get the support you need within the school, and then to know that feeling is going to be able to go away. That is a skill that school counselors, school social workers continue to teach and work on with kids. But we want our kids to get that, right? That is why we have created, we society have created this anxious generation.
And this was a question for both you as the director of school counseling, so you're over, um, our, um, middle school, school counselors, and also for, uh, Pam and Mike and Joe. If an approach was taken, is it a rip a Band-Aid off approach and it's a whole school approach? Or would you phase it out, starting with eighth graders rolling it down?
When you say.
I'm just looking at it from the perspective of like, if it's a whole school approach, it's like, are you going to have two hundred kids at the school counseling office because they're anxious that they can't have their phone and it's going to be taken away? Or, you know, how do you?
Yeah, I think there is something to be said for the difference between a fifth grader and an eighth grader. That's a huge developmental difference. I know currently at the middle school, kids can use their phones when they first get to school. So I think I would want some clarity around, would that be allowed? Were, before the school day? I forgot what time it starts.
Yep, they're in the cafeteria having breakfast in the morning.
It's gone. So if there was to be a change, would that even be allowed? I'm not sure, I don't know the answer, I'm not sure if you know the answer to that yet. But I think having a difference in eighth grade versus fifth grade is important, right? To also teach the kids that were, we know that they're maturing, they have to be able to handle more. But I do think being able to have clear boundaries around what the rules are are important. Yeah, but I would, my recommendation would be to have some, a, a different sort of system for the younger grades at the middle school versus the eighth grade.
But would you implement whatever those systems looked like at the same time? Or for, um, resources within the school, specifically our admin and our school counselors, would there be this like tsunami for them to have to manage if there was, uh, something implemented as a grades five through eight?
I mean, from what I'm hearing today, it doesn't seem like there would be a necessarily huge change. What I've heard be discussed is potentially going from two chances to one chance. So I don't necessarily think that would have a tsunami of an effect.
Well, it would just mean that it takes it out of the hands of our classroom teachers. We have a lot more classroom teachers than we do school counselors and admin.
I guess I'm not understanding. So my under, what I got from tonight was that we were looking at potential of, right now, there's two chances, then it would go to administrator. Instead, there would be the potential of you get caught, Elsie, with your cellphone and you're in fifth grade, the fifth grade teacher is automatically sending Elsie to Mr. Mistracchio?
Yes, that's what I would do.
And I'm just saying, that was just me as one person saying that, so I don't know what everybody else is feeling.
I'm only speaking for myself, but that is.
So I think clarity around that. I also think, we also want to be fair and people are going to make mistakes. So I think no chance wouldn't really be the way I would suggest going. I think allowing kids at least one chance and then the second time going to an administrator would give them that idea of, if it happens again, right? How many times do we as parents say to our kids, sorry, kids, right? If it happens again, this is going to happen, and then following through. I can see the difference between, if it happens again, if it happens again, ooh, now I really am sending you. But I think allowing one chance is something for us to consider.
That, and, and I, I definitely, you know, I appreciate your perspective, but it kind of like reduces the elimination, banning, whatever you want to call it, effect, if there's a chance that the.
Yeah.
My objective would be to get the phones out of the school.
Yeah, and I would respectfully disagree that there aren't many times in our life that we aren't given a chance, including not paying our credit card on time, right? There's that little five-day grace period, right? We all have sort of a, the opportunity to make a mistake and learn from it. But I can see not wanting the double and the third chance.
Does anybody else have questions or comments? Matt?
Could I just add on to what Ms. Letourneau said and what our principal said? So I do think that middle schoolers, especially like younger years, like fifth graders, aren't really as obviously mature as older students, so they might make more mistakes. They might use their cell phones, they might not think, oh, wait, if I do this, I'm going to lose it. So I do think that they shouldn't go like straight to, straight to AP or something. They should have some sort of grace period. I also do think that if you take cell phones away, you are kind of losing a learning opportunity because in the real world, you are going to have the opportunity to use your phone at work. Sure, it might get you in trouble, it might not be the best option, but that temptation's still going to be there. Like Elsie said, it's an addiction. If you completely take them away, then they don't have the, the choice for some, for themselves to not use it. You're kind of saying you can't use it, so they don't develop their own responsibility to say, hey, I shouldn't be using it. And especially for middle schoolers, they might not, they might be too young to, to be able to make that choice for themselves. But I feel like for high schoolers, we should have that option. Even if there's a right answer and a wrong answer, sure, you shouldn't use it during class. You should have the option so you can learn responsibility. And for the middle schoolers, I do think that, sure, they are less responsible, so you might want to enforce stricter restrictions, but I wouldn't say harsher restrictions because they're middle schoolers, they're more prone to like, maybe they don't think it through, maybe they just use their cellphone during class. They might not understand the consequences as thoroughly as like a high schooler might. So I would say that they might need more in-depth restrictions, but it shouldn't be harsher for them because they don't have the same responsibility as a high schooler might to be able to choose not to, not to use it.
Thank you. Is there anybody that wants to add anything to the conversation? Thank you, Beth. Any last minute thoughts?
I would just say, I feel like this workshop for me was very helpful. And I like this use of a workshop for more discussion. I don't feel like we do enough of these, so I'm glad that we're starting to do more of them.
Yep, I'd like to add to that.
Yeah.
I, I just want to make sure that when everybody leaves here, um, at least for me, and Amy has just said that it makes a difference to hear from you and, and have, you know, a back and forth like this. Yeah, it's, it's very helpful, so thank you very much.
I do think that it would be good to have another survey at the high school only, maybe a month, month and a half after Christmas break, um, just to see where things are at, at that point.
When I also want to add, thank you to the three of you as well. You're, I mean, that's the reason why you're here and we appreciate so much to hear from you. So always speak up whenever you have something to say, please.
So I just want to, um, yeah, the survey, maybe both but separate even, great to see where that's at. And it seems to me like we really just need to hone in on our procedures that we have now. You know, obviously we have another discussion to, to make, but it sounds like, you know, being consistent, implementing that we've, kind of how we've been implementing this year is, you know, better than the past few years, so.
I, I think, you know, also just to be, to be honest, the, the change that's happened at the high school, we heard from the students and we know from talking about it in July, word got out. And that is the reason why they're doing what they're doing. And my concern is that I'd want to see that continue there. And then, um, and I would be comfortable with keeping the policy as is if it was enforced and, and continues to be enforced. At the middle school, um, you know, it sounds like they.
At the middle school, you know, it sounds like they, they request the cell phones to be put back, put in their backpacks for the day. And they can use them in the morning, after, obviously. So, you know, using the word eliminate, like you said, we can't dictate what eliminate means for a family. Some families, it's gonna mean, oh, my kid can't bring their, their phone to school. Some, it's gonna be like, it's not gonna change, you need to keep it in your backpack. That, therefore, you have it after school if you need to contact me. But I do think three chances is way too many before it gets to an, you know, two chances and then a third, a third time, a third offense, and then it goes to the admin. I think that's, I think that's way, way too many at this point. Too, too many chances for an underdeveloped middle schooler.
Agreed. Matt? Anything you'd like to?
Nope, just taking notes. I think anytime, it's a complex issue, right? As we've come back and seen with that, I think it's really not realistic when you're looking at a hundred percent exclusionary policies. But I think it's important to draw boundaries around the use. And I think to also remember that we are a school department, and with that, there's learning. There's learning that comes back for us to be able to assist and help with that. I do think that support and training along the way is another piece where I think we can be able to help students understand some of the dangers that I think we're all worried about when you start talking about addiction to the cellphone and those impacts. And then I also think any outreach that we can do for parents to help them understand as well so that, as always, we're working together in terms of coming at this complex issue and not trying to look at it to policy it in a way, I don't know if that's a word, but using it as a verb, but for us to look at it that way. And then it also gets back to consistency, that I think is another message that's come through with that. So taking some notes and found it to be very helpful.
All right, I'm, I'm one of those that I take it all in, I don't talk during the meeting, like, this, you know, I understand cell phones being used as an educational tool. But I think all of us being in disciplinary hearings, we have seen it be misused over and over again in some really, really harmful ways. I think social media is, if, if I could turn back the time as a parent and not allow my children to have social media, I'd, I'd do that. So I appreciate it being an educational tool, but we are also in charge of, we're in charge, we're a learning environment only, like, you know? And cell phones are not the end-all, be-all of educational tool. Pens, paper, books, calculators, laptops, yeah. It's a communication device, it's not, they were not created for us to be doing math homework on. So, you know, again, it goes back to me for the high school that I want to give them a solid chance to, to implement and keep, implement, keep at it with the current policy and not, I don't wanna be the fun police, like, I just don't. But I also want to protect the integrity of the learning environment.
Okay, I think, wanna thank everyone once again for all of that. And now I think we're now reached here. Turn it over to Chair, looking for a recommendation.
Okay, so if going once, going twice, no more comments? Okay. Recommendation to adjourn this meeting at five thirty-four. Second. All in favor? All in favor, and thank you once again to everybody that took the time to come here today, much appreciated.